Ladies and gentlemen, would everyone stand for the pledge? This time, I'd like to introduce United States Navy Veteran Lou Febel. Lou is a veteran of the United States Naval Reserve, United States Navy. He was assigned to USS Francis Murray, an attack transport ship before being honorably discharged and being deployed to Antarctica, the Mediterranean, and to the Caribbean. Lou, thank you for your service. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. It's an honor and a pleasure to be here this morning to join you and lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, and everybody have a great day.
Thank you, Lou. We're going to have a moment of silence for some of our law enforcement heroes that lost their lives this past week. California Highway Patrol, California Sergeant Steven LaCanne was struck and killed by a vehicle while conducting a traffic stop. Detective Ben Campbell was struck and killed by a vehicle's tire while assisting on the scene of a disabled vehicle, and that's Main Street Police Department, Maine. Colwitz County Sheriff's Office, Washington, Deputy Sheriff Justin DeRosa was shot and killed responding to investigate reports of a disabled motorhome. Please keep these heroes of law enforcement and our thoughts and our prayers and their families in this horrible time of their lives, for someone that's meant so much has been lost. Thank you. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, April 17th Board of Commissioners meeting to order, 10:00 AM in the Commissioners' Conference Room at the Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe at 123 Wyoming Avenue. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Notary Annie? Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Yes. Proclam-- oh, wait, one second. I'm not sure, but we have had a crazy day in weather this past week. Our first responders have done a tremendous job. Police Department, Fire Department, our own emergency services, they have done an incredible job in making sure that our community's safe. And the cleanup was amazing. PP&amp;L was on the scene immediately. Emergency Services, Winnebago was actually right on Harrison Avenue to support the emergency services. It was incredible. And as of yesterday, I'm sure that people read the paper and had the opportunity to go around with the National Weather Service. They classified it as an EF0 hurricane, 85 miles an hour, and they figured it hopped like four times. It landed twice in South Side, and then it hit into the Hill section, and then it actually landed in the lower part of Dunmore. And those of you that might know Sherwood Park, it landed in Sherwood Park. And now if anybody realizes there's beautiful pine trees that have been up there for like the last 60 years, well, they got taken right out. So we really, I mean, it was a real hurricane, and if there was people out on the streets, I think it would have, there would have been people that would have lost their lives. So, I mean, sometimes maybe a night it was better that it happened that way, but a lot of the neighbors I spoke to told me they didn't even realize that there had even been that type of devastation outside till they walked out. Some of them actually had trees on their front porch and didn't even realize it. But hats off to our, all of our first responders. They did a fabulous, fabulous, fabulous job. Like I said, PP&amp;L was there right on the spot, and like, there was a lot of wires down, you know, a lot of fear, a lot of situations that could have occurred with people being electrocuted. But with that being said, I was with Rich Barbolas yesterday, and I'd like for him to come up to the podium. Rich Barbolas is from Emergency Services, and I'd like for him to talk about Code Red. And this isn't on our agenda, but I want to put it on. This is an app where you could be like warned immediately as soon as we know something's coming. I mean, the Weather Channel and the Emergency Services are basically one of the two people that go together like peanut butter jelly, and they know what's going on immediately. Rich, talk about Code Red and how people could get the app and how it could actually save their lives.
Morning Commissioners. Code Red is a very valuable piece of software or an app in an emergency or even in a non-emergency situation where many people have to be notified in a quick time. It's free. There's a link on the county website. Just click on the Code Red logo. It'll take you to the application process, which is very simple. Name, address, phone number, the carrier of your cellphone, or if you still have a pager these days, it can be sent to a pager, email address, or to a home phone. As I said, it's very valuable in warning people in these situations. I got an alert to this situation probably an hour and a half before it really struck here. It was raining at the time, but I got an alert that, for my specific area where I live, that there was going to be a severe weather event. And the good thing about Code Red is that, again, it's free, but it follows you wherever you go. So if you're on vacation somewhere and they use this product and they send out a warning, you're still going to get that warning somewhere else. It's not specific to the locale where you are, unless, obviously, if you register your home phone, then it's specific to that address. But a mobile phone, cellphone, it will follow that wherever you go. As I said, you use it for, you get the, the good thing about it is that the storm warnings, they don't come from the county, they come direct from Code Red, and they get the information from the National Weather Service. So we know it's accurate, it's not somebody guessing, and it's up to the minute. And again, it's as specific as your address. The warning I got the other day, it says, you know, severe weather, tornado watch for my address, 123 Main Street, in your community, and it gives you a start time and expiration time. So it alerted me to the situation, in my situation, where I had to get to work to prepare for this and any events that might follow. I took the liberty of having Mr. Notary, no, Notary, excuse me, place some brochures and informational literature on the table outside the door here. So anybody that wants to sign up or wants more information on it, they could read that, they could go to Code Red's website, or just go to the county website, click on the Code Red logo, and it'll walk you through the application process.
Rich, talk a little bit about the devastation. If that had happened during the day, there would have been fatalities.
If that happened during the day, we probably would be canceling this meeting today because it would be that devastating. At least, I wouldn't be here. I'd be very, very busy and very busy for the coming weeks. We were fortunate in that it happened during the night. Everybody was home, everybody was asleep, there was very little traffic on the road, nobody out at the playgrounds as at Sherwood Park. If that was daytime where there were kids there, just people walking, it would have been a different story. We had no reported injuries, no fatalities. Most of the damage was trees, utilities. There was damage to homes. Fortunately, it wasn't very severe in most cases, so people were fairly lucky. I know if you have a four-foot round tree in your front yard, that's an emergency to you, but in the big scheme of things, it was, we dodged a big bullet.
How about Scranton PDA, Dunmore PD, the fire departments from both communities, the DPWs from Scranton and from Dunmore, how about the job that they did cleaning up and...
The response was amazing. I couldn't believe the difference in several hours from right after the storm till when we toured with the Weather Service yesterday, how quickly it was cleaned up. And if not for the few large trees laying in some yards in some precarious positions where they needed a crane to move them, you probably, if somebody not knowing that there was a storm driving through, you probably wouldn't realize that there was. It was that quick. There were so many, so many different crews came in. PPL, tree cutting crews, the police, the fire departments, they all performed amazingly in this situation.
I was up there that morning, and the streets, they were impassable. You couldn't get through the streets. Like I said, it was, thank God for Emergency Services, because they made sure everything was blocked off, nobody was getting near any power lines or any trees or anything that could hurt anybody. It was incredible. But this picture right here really depicts it. Like, that tree on the house, I mean, we saw that tree. That tree just being taken down by a crane, they couldn't even cut that in pieces, because if they cut a piece of it, it'd roll off and wreck the rest of the house. So that was being taken down by a crane. It was either late yesterday or hopefully today, they were waiting for the insurance adjuster to come. But all those streets that were littered with debris on Monday, if you went through on Tuesday, they were clear, weren't they, Rich?
Yes.
They were clear.
Yes.
But please, the reason I brought Rich in today was because of Code Red. I mean, you can get this app in your phone, I mean, we're here to make sure 214,000 citizens are safe, and we're very concerned. This was very concerning about, I mean, how fast this came in, and this little app could get you to your basement or get you somewhere safe, basically.
Absolutely. And not only for weather, but, you know, other events if there, for some situation where you had to have a mass evacuation, you could send that message.
Flooding, if we have incredible, like a blizzard, stay off the streets.
Right. We used it in the blizzard we had a few years ago to alert people in a particular area of the county that there was a shelter open for them because they had no power. It could be used, prisoner escape, dangerous prisoner, you know, to alert people to, you know, stay home, lock their doors, turn their porch light on, or whatever situation might be. A hazardous materials incident where maybe you had the shelter in place and close up your house and just stay there for a while, or evacuate, an evacuation route. There's just, there's multiple uses for it.
So please, get the app. It could save your life.
And it's free.
It's free.
It's a simple process. It only takes you, you know, a minute or two to sign up and to, then download, obviously download the app onto your phone if you're doing it on a mobile phone or cellphone. You would have to download that app. But if it's on a, you're sending it to an email or to a home phone, you could do it online.
I'd also like to just bring up the neighbors, the people that their houses got, you know, shingles in your yard and branches and stuff. They're so diligent. Most of the yards were cleaned up perfect, weren't they? It was like amazing, amazing. But please, sign up for the app. It really matters. I'd like to thank yourself, Dave Hahn, and your staff to do a great job.
Thank you.
And having that emergency vehicle there, that was a big help for everyone, so.
It helps in a few ways. It gives them communications on scene with the mobile command truck, and it also helps take that load off the dispatchers in the 911 center so they can concentrate on the phone calls that are coming in instead of dealing with that one specific emergency.
And this mobile command center is so unique that when Susquehanna's Emergency Services went down, they asked us to come up, and what did that provide?
That provided them radio communications that they didn't have. A few years back also, we used it in, or Wayne County used it when their 911 center got flooded. We took it up there, and in a few hours' time, they had it connected to antennas, and they were back up and running for, they used that for about two weeks.
Yeah. Commissioners, Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you for all your work. It was a scary event, and I'm glad that there was no fatalities. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Notary Annie?
Great job as usual. The whole group organization was a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll tell you what, Rich, thank God we got those grants years ago, because all the technology is up to date.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, seconds matter, you know that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Okay. We have 19-0093. Presentation for Chase Yarns. Is Chase here?
Yes.
Chase, thanks for coming in.
No problem.
Chase, your family with you?
Yes, I have my parents with me back there.
They can come up if they want.
They can come up if you want.
But I want to talk a little bit about my story and the nonprofit I work for. So I wrote a book. It's called Chase Yarns: An Untold Story. And my story goes back to 2016. I had smoked marijuana for the first time, and I had a bad reaction, which led to my first panic attack ever. I never knew what a panic attack was like. My heart started to flutter. I never had anxiety. I was in National Honor Society, honor roll every quarter. And my life completely changed after smoking the one time. But I would like to talk a little, sorry.
It's okay, take your time.
Yeah. But I want to thank the Commissioners, Commissioner Notary Annie, Commissioner O'Malley, and Commissioner Cummings. I thank God for the good works I could do despite my struggle and suffering. I want to thank my parents. My parents have been like the best parents in the world. They've stuck with me through everything. When my behavior was off, as my brain was stuck in a fight or flight for two and a half years, they would hold my hand in the hospital in the waiting room to get evaluated. I was hospitalized for a total of 158 days in psychiatric units, spanning Maryland. I was hospitalized in Maryland, and I was also hospitalized in Scranton and upstate New York. So basically, my book talks about my journey and everything. I'm just, I'm blessed. I'm very blessed. So I'm glad my book can tell others about my story that they're not alone. There's a big stigma with mental health, and that needs to change because, so basically, the disorder I developed is called depersonalization, derealization disorder. It's known as DDD. It was formerly known as DPD. So what depersonalization is, is when you're detached from yourself. And derealization is when you're detached from your surroundings. So things seem like surreal or dreamlike. So basically, I was stuck in that chronically for two and a half years, which is, it's like, say you get in a car accident, you're in fight or flight mode. Well, I was stuck in that for two and a half years. So I was on national television, as people in the community know, and that was like defamation, taken completely out of context. But I'm here now with a book. I'm also a board member of a nonprofit called IDS, Initiative for Depersonalization Studies. And that is, we have support groups. We meet in New York City. We've had four to five conferences. We try to meet every month as best we can. We, sometimes we lack funding to do those sorts of things. But depersonalization is the third most common psychiatric symptom, along with the first two being anxiety and depression. Some people call it dissociation, but, so yeah. Basically, and I'm glad I work with IDS, because we have a wide range of diversity with, in the group, it affects so many people. It doesn't matter what your occupation is, it doesn't matter how old you are. People have this all ages. Now, the poster board, like, I'm like the poster board child for this, and it can help, well, it can happen to college students. That happens a lot. Marijuana is one of the biggest trigger, and I say trigger and not cause, but the biggest triggers are Lyme disease, marijuana. Sometimes it's just their first panic attack. There's numerous reasons why their disorder could be triggered. But, yeah, we have two groups in the nonprofit. We have a Midwest group, and then we have, in Chicago, and then we have the New York City one. But, yeah, thank you for the Good Works Award. It means a lot, and I do these things, like work with the nonprofit, and I spread awareness because I have to. You know, it was my life. That's all I knew. I don't get anything out, I don't get anything out of like telling my story besides helping others. And I do that just through my Savior, Jesus Christ, and I try to help the community as best I can despite my struggles. But now I'm doing much, much better, and I'm glad that I could stand before you here today, having gone through all that. Sorry if I was all over the place, but...
That's okay.
So much information, but thank you.
So a couple of questions, Chase. You, this started, when did this start and why? What happened that started this? Can you talk about the initial story that...
Yes. So this started, I was, I was, I was accepted in Ithaca's physical therapy program, and one night I smoked marijuana through, and actually, it was an apple, a homemade bong. And I was in Ithaca, New York, in the common section, and my heart started to flutter, and I thought I was literally dying, even though I wasn't. I had never experienced a panic attack before, but it first started out, when I looked around, everything, it seemed as if I was floating or in a different, like, universe, but I knew that I wasn't. And that's the thing, these people who have depersonalization disorder, these people are extremely intelligent, but they're not insane at all. What it really is, it's hyper-aware of consciousness, but yeah, when I was in Ithaca, that day I smoked, I was like looking around, and things seemed completely unreal, detached, foreign. I had known my surroundings my whole life, and that was taken away from me. And then also, I, so that's derealization, depersonalization. Then I started to say like, you know, who am I? But not only that, when I looked into the mirror, I didn't recognize my face. I didn't recognize my body. Now, it wasn't like hallucinations, it wasn't a delusion, it was, everything seemed foreign about living in my existence. But that night, I went to the ER, I got evaluated, then I had an 8:00 AM class the next day, and I got out of that ER at 5:00 AM, and I got, so I had a couple hours of sleep, and then I got ready for class. But yeah, I'm a quadruplet, so my sister was going to college with me, and I looked at her, and I had known her since literally the womb. And I looked at her, and it was like I've never met her before. And that's when I knew things were getting really serious, which led to my multiple hospitalizations, but I've been out of the hospital for over a year now, so, and I'm doing very well now.
Were you, but you weren't, you weren't alone when you did this?
No.
Somebody that was with you, and I just had two last questions. Somebody else was with you, did they experience the same symptoms? And also, what did the ER, did they know you were smoking marijuana, and what was their, what was their statement to you?
Well, what was the first, about who I was with?
Yeah, did it affect the other person that grew up the same way?
Oh, yeah. It did not affect the person the way it affected me. I had like an adverse reaction.
Okay.
And then the, actually, the person, the doctor, didn't even say it was anxiety or a panic attack. He was just like, I don't know, your heart wasn't like, you weren't having a heart attack, so.
But he knew that you had been...
He knew I had been smoking marijuana.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for coming in, and your parents are here with you, and I'd like to, if I can, recognize them for the support they've provided to you. Can they come up for me?
Yeah, they could come up.
Come on up to the podium. Hi, can you just tell us your names and...
Amy Yarns.
And...
Chris Yarns.
Hi, Chris. Thank you so much for the support you've given your son. You know, I appreciate that you started a new group, because this is something we're going to have to be looking at. And I think there's two stigmas that really have to be identified when we're talking about this. One, when you complain about these symptoms, it shouldn't be kind of brushed under the rug and said, "It'll go away, you'll sleep it off." And that's what I'm assuming had occurred. Am I correct?
Yes.
Because that's what a lot of times happens.
Yeah, a part of it is sometimes I wish it wasn't marijuana, sometimes it's, I wish like I ate a peanut. If I said I ate a peanut and I was never the same, people would be so interested. But since it's marijuana, oh, they can't do that. I'm like, well, I'm just telling the truth, what the trigger was. It could have been a different trigger, it could have been anything. And that has been one of the problems. But in some people are like scared to death to tell people. I've had people in Clark Summit who have said this has happened to me, and I've had, actually, family, I've had people from the high school I went to. A lot of people I knew, they came to me. They didn't know what it was called. And there's a name for it, which is depersonalization and derealization. And on the brochure, it's very hard to explain, like, you can only explain it in metaphors, but some of the quotes, like, on our brochure, it says, "Everything seems so unreal. My self has disappeared. I feel like a robot. My thoughts seem strange. My mind feels detached from my body. The world seems foreign and unfamiliar. I can't feel anything. My head feels hollow. I think I'm going crazy. My bod, my body seems so weird. I don't recognize myself in the mirror. I am afraid of my own existence. I feel like I'm watching myself in a movie. No one senses what I do. Everyone says it's in my head. What's wrong with me?"
Well, I'd like to have a copy of that, and I think, you know, we'll have to, I'm hoping that you can meet with our drug and alcohol group, and maybe we can get some more information on your group for IDS. I just think we're going to need to be more aware of what's happening, because these support services are going to obviously grow with what's going on in our community, so our county is going to have to get involved in that. And I'm sure that you're going to be getting more calls as this progresses with the use of this drug. So I greatly appreciate you having the courage to come in here, because I know the backlash that you had spoken to me about, that you, and people being afraid to say that this has happened to them because of the perception out there that it's okay, it's safe, so you must be wrong, you can't be feeling anything that's wrong with you. And people are afraid to say there's something actually wrong with them. And it's, it shouldn't happen that way. So thank you for having the courage and the stamina, and your mom wants to speak as well.
I just want to say one thing. Chase probably hasn't explained. He has been hospitalized several times. I can't, I don't even know what the number is right now.
Three admissions in 150.
Eight, eight.
Yeah.
He was tested, every admission, tested for drugs and alcohol, everything, nothing since the night he tried it the one time. There's never been drug use since then except prescription medications. So I just want to make you aware of that, that it was the one time marijuana used.
Isn't that amazing? Like, isn't that scary?
It is, it is. And I know it just triggered it. And also, one more thing, quickly. Chase, did you say there was maybe about 20 kids that had that same marijuana?
Yeah.
There was about 20 kids that had that same marijuana, and it didn't happen to any of them.
Right.
So we go through, was it laced, was it laced?
Thank you for bringing that up, because that's the other thing.
That was all I wanted to say.
I'm very glad you brought that up. Thank you. That's the other thing that, you know, I was asked the same thing, well, do these people that you interviewed, do they have anything in that? And it was, no, there was nothing else in it. It was just THC. So again, thank you to your family for supporting you and standing up for you and always...
They have been so good.
You know, I read your book. It's The Chase Yarns: An Untold Story. It's very interesting, and I'm really proud. I'm really proud of the fact that, you know, you're able to have the courage to come on in the public and talk about your story, and your parents as well. I know all too well, trust me, the backlash you've received.
A lot, too much.
It's, it's not necessary, and the medical community has to stand up and discuss this. And as a county, we have an obligation to make sure that we're prepared for such problems. We do drug and alcohol programs, and we pay for millions and millions of dollars. You know, the opioid crisis has devastated our community, and... You know, the opioid crisis has devastated our community, and, you know, this is something we're going to have to prepare for if it's going to be, recreational is going to be passed. So, thank you so very much. I greatly appreciate you coming in. Thank you.
Commissioner Oteroini?
Chase, it's amazing that you've had the nerve and the courage to tell your story. It's, it's really, and it is, and so important to so many other people that don't understand it, know about it. I had no clue. I really don't. I'm looking forward to reading your book.
Thank you.
Looking forward to learning more about it. It's, deserves a lot of credit. Good luck with your organizations, and if there's anything that our mental health department can do to be helpful, I'm sure we will, our behavioral department. And we make sure that they're in a position to educate the public and help you, help everybody else. But again, thank you very much for, for the, this information.
Thank you.
Chase, yeah, it takes a lot of guts for what you've done in setting up a book. You can reach out with our Behavioral Health, and we'll see if, we'd like for you to sit down and talk with them. But to your parents, congratulations. You're, you're great parents to be there. Make sure that, you know, I mean, that everything was taken care of. 180 days is a long time to be hospitalized in numerous hospitals. And you're not even, you're not even sure what happened to yourself. You know what I mean? You just, all of a sudden, went from being a honor society student to being, not knowing your siblings, not understanding what was going on.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's such a drastic situation. But thank you for having the guts and coming here, you know, and being on ECTV and letting the, the community know that, you know, sometimes you're not sleeping it off. You shouldn't start. You've got to watch what you're doing. And how it could just change your life, like dramatically. But we're, we're happy you're here, and that everything's going well, and that you have excellent parents.
I do. They've been warriors.
Excellent parents. And I really mean it. That's what, kids need to have excellent parents, you know? Your kids are your, you know, I mean, your pride and joy, and they're what you want, the better of who both of you are to go forward. Your parents did a fabulous job, but thank you for coming forward and talking about this issue, so it's not left in the dark.
How do you get in touch with your group, Chase?
Well, I have my own Facebook page, but we have a Facebook page for initiative for depersonalization studies. We have a website, it's depersonalization.info. And, I mean, yeah, it, around the area, you could contact me if you want to know more. But, yeah, we have the website and the Facebook page, so...
And this isn't just not in PA, it's...
Oh, this is, we've had people come from different countries, all, yeah.
Okay. Well, I thank you so much for coming in.
We have a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Chase Yarns in honor of achieving a designation of an individual providing great works in Lackawanna County, given the 17th of April 2019 by Commissioner O'Malley, Commissioner Oteroini, and Commissioner Cummings. Would you and your parents like to come forward?
Yes, thank you so much.
Mom, thank you so much. You're a beautiful, absolutely wonderful situation.
Excellent parents, I'm so sorry. Scary, scary. Yeah, you got them back, but that's because you're great parents. Take care. Good luck.
Good luck.
Take care, kiddo. Be good. Just show us what great young people we have in our community, and when an issue comes up, that they bring it forward, because they don't want it to happen to anybody else.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chase.
Chase, how could they, can they buy your book in the store?
Amazon, he said.
Yeah, they, you could purchase the book on Amazon for $14.95. If you just look up Chase Yarns, An Untold Story, it'll come right up, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. 19-0094, proclamation declaring April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Just wondering if we could...
Good morning. My name is Anna...
From the Women's Resource Center, right?
Yes, my name is Anna Farmelli, and I'm the Crisis and Advocacy Services Director at the Women's Resource Center. The Women's Resource Center has been serving the people of Lackawanna County for over 40 years. Our mission is to end domestic and sexual violence through advocacy, education, and social change. Through the years, WRC has served as the designated crisis response center for those who have experienced domestic and/or sexual violence. Since I started working at the center 19 years ago, our work has grown to include a broad safe housing program, legal representation through the Barbara J. Hart Justice Center, an economic justice project, services to victims of sexual violence who are incarcerated in the Lackawanna County prison, and prevention education programs in our local high schools. Our services have also expanded to provide counseling for teens who are experiencing dating violence, victims of stalking, and victims of trafficking. Our agency is staffed by dedicated individuals in the, who are passionate about WRC's mission to end domestic and sexual violence. April is a busy month at WRC. In addition to all of the services and advocacy that we normally provide, April's also Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Sexual Assault Awareness Month has been observed nationally since 2001, with teal ribbons being the symbol of the work being done to end sexual violence. The goal of Sexual Violence Awareness Month is twofold. The first part being to raise awareness around the issue of sexual violence, and the second, to focus on the prevention of sexual abuse within our communities. The Women's Resource Center recognizes that the effort needed to put an end to sexual violence in our community is immense. And so, WRC partners with members of our community, other nonprofit organizations, the local faith community, law enforcement, and our local governments to work together to make our community a safer place for all. We want to take this opportunity to thank the commissioners for your continued support of WRC and the lifesaving services that we provide. Thank you for having me here today.
And I'd like to thank you for coming in. You know, I realize that this month was Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and it just hit a chord with me. My sister sits at the empty place setting, Margie Hello, Nick Davis, and she was murdered June 9, 1980, by her estranged husband. And the weeks before she died, she had, it was called a peace bond back then, it wasn't a PFA. And he had options to go and visit the kids. And the one time he came to the house, and she was there, and she was handing the children over to him, and he tried to rip her clothes off from the kids, and all this craziness went on. And she went to the authorities, and she told them, she said, "This is what happened. He came in my house, he was tearing my clothes off. You know, we have a peace bond on him. I don't know how, if I'm going to survive. You know, he's out to get me." And they told her, they said, "Quit dressing so sexy. You know, my sister was married, this is June 9, 1980. She was wearing a Mr. Bill shirt from Saturday Night Live, and she was wearing a pair of cutoff jeans." That's what she was wearing.
Yes.
You know? And she lived in that fear up until the moment that he took her life.
Unfortunately, that's one of the myths that surrounds sexual abuse. People think that it's about what the victim is wearing, and it really isn't. Sexual abuse is very much like domestic violence, about power and maintaining power over an individual. So, I, I completely understand what you're saying, and unfortunately, we still have some of that type of thinking happening today. April, I believe it's 24th, is actually Denim Day in the USA, and that is a movement to, that actually grew out of a protest, out of a court case in Italy, where the judges actually said that because the jeans that the young woman who had been sexually assaulting was, sexually assaulted was wearing, they were so tight, she must have had helped them remove them. And so, the rapists were not held accountable for their behavior. And, you know, to protest that, people are wearing jeans on April 24th, because it's not about what you're wearing. You know, it's not, it's never the victim's fault, and we, we need to be very clear about that in our community and offer support to victims of sexual violence.
See, that victim was my sister and my godmother at the same time, and she was 16 when I was born. It's just always, it's always been there since then. That's why we do so much work for the Women's Resource Center, because it really matters. But, um, let's, if somebody'd like to volunteer hours for the Women's Resource Center, who do they call? What do they do?
So, you can call the Women's Resource Center. Our, we have a website, it's W N, W R C N E P A dot org. Our contact information is on our website. We also do social media, so we have Facebook and Twitter, and Twitter and Instagram for our teen WRC services. And our hotline number is 570-346-4671, and that's a 24-hour hotline. If you need assistance, or if anyone you know needs assistance, please contact us, and we will get you the help that you would be looking for.
We need to talk about the donations you accept, besides the financial, financial, and, I know there's other things, but people got to realize that when women leave their houses, it's their children they're leaving with, and sometimes they're leaving with the clothes around their back.
Yes.
And that's it.
Yes.
Because my sister left many times like that.
Mm-hmm.
So, talk a little bit about what type of donations you guys accept.
We accept all types of donations, from things that would help people get around, like bus tickets, to be able to assist people, our program participants to get to the appointments that they need to get to, perhaps they need to get to court. And like you said, lots of times, people leave with just the clothing they have on their backs. So, we also take clothing donations. We actually have a program that we have been running for about a year now, where we put together bags and provide them to the local hospitals for, in cases of someone having to go to the hospital to get a forensic rape examination. Often, the clothes are taken as part of the evidence, and so, we provide bags that have Women's Resource Center information on it, along with clothing and some toiletry items, so that people have something to wear besides, like, a hospital gown and scrubs to leave the hospital after having to have...
And financial donations, absolutely, for...
Always financial donations.
I want to finish the story real quick. So, she was told, "Don't dress so sexy." And she walked out the door. Now, I've been in Harrisburg, I've been to Washington DC to make sure that the laws have gotten stronger and better, and it became a PFA, Protection from Abuse. But what bothers me is if that was today, and my sister had gone in and said exactly what she said back in 1980, because it was two weeks from the, from that time that she got murdered, he would have been in prison and off the streets. They would have went and got him. They didn't. They just didn't. But, just so sad. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, I know all too well the story that you're talking about, because I too left with just the clothes on my back. So, I know exactly what you're talking about, and love your agency, because you saved my life, so thank you.
Good job.
Saved my life. And, you know, I don't talk about the specifics, but maybe one day I will. But, you know, people really don't know what it's like to, you know, run from something and go to somewhere that you know nothing about, out of your comfort zone, out of town, with the clothes on your back, in fear of your life, with babies in tow. And I do. And I am so grateful that your agency exists, because without you and the church, I wouldn't be here today. So, I thank you for saving my life. Thank you.
Commissioner Oteroini?
I'm just very happy and proud that we support the Women's Resource Center. You do a great job, your whole organization does, and I think we should probably try to be a little bit more helpful to them, actually. Thank you.
We're very helpful to them. We help them with everything, including we're doing a new central court out next to the county prison, and there will be a special room for the Women's Resource Center, because we want to make sure that the victims were not going to be victimized by the individuals who actually saw them. No, we're there at any opportunity we possibly can to help them. Peg Gruddy, one of the bests there's ever been.
Yes.
Peg Gruddy started off there as an intern. She's been the director for probably the last 30 years, and I've known her for most of that, a lot of it. "We have a proclamation, 'Whereas sexual assault affects women and children and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds. And in addition, immediate physical and emotional costs of sexual assault may have associated with consequences of post-traumatic stress disorder.'" Yes, absolutely. That's absolutely, my poor sister. "Substance abuse, depression, homelessness, eating disorders, and suicide. And whereas, sexual assault can be devastating, not only for the survivor, but also the family." Absolutely, the family takes a shot when this goes on. "And friends. And no one person, organization, agency, community can eliminate sexual assault on their own. But we can work together to educate the citizens about what we can, what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support survivors and their significant, significant others, and increase support for agencies providing this service for these victims. So, please, if you donations or anything, please get them to the Women's Resource Center. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing sexual assault before it happens, or, and show support for agencies such as the Women's Resource Center and their staff that provides critical advocacy and service and support for sexual assault survivors. Whereas Lackawanna County strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners of everyone and the community members actively engaging in public and private efforts to prevent sexual assault. It is time for all of us to start the conversation, take the appropriate action, and support one another, and create a safe environment for all and the children, especially the children." We, Patrick O'Malley, Jerry Oteroini, Lauren A. Cummings, Commissioners of Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim April 2019 on behalf of the 214,000 citizens as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lackawanna County. And I would like to come forward.
Thanks for your work. Thank you. Thank you very much. Really appreciate your responsibility.
Oh, it says, "I ask for consent." So, that's our theme this year.
Good job.
Thanks.
Thank you.
floor. We're going to be bringing an empty table setting in, in the next so many weeks, so that date will be announced in the paper. I reached out to Peg already, so that's going to be happening. We're going to have it, I think, for a day or two. So, I'd like to just remind everybody about the empty place setting downstairs. Thanks, Anna, for coming in. 19-0096, Small Business Spotlight.
We have Schooner Eye Care. Dr. Rebecca Schooner? Schoonover, sorry. Schoonover, sorry. I should have put my glasses on.
I brought them. If you actually need them, I did bring them.
Yeah, actually.
Hello, and good morning.
Morning, Doctor.
Hello, thanks. Thank you for having me here today. I'm excited to talk about my business and the growth of my business in Lackawanna County. My name is Becky Schoonover. I'm a local optometrist in, on Main Street in Peckville. Quick background about me and my family. I'm from Jessup. I grew up in Dixon City. I went to St. Michael's, which is an all-star academy, and then I moved on to Bishop O'Hara. Eventually, I went to East Stroudsburg University, and then Optometry School in Florida. So, one of the reasons I was asked to come here today and to talk about my business is the growth of my business, but also the fact that I did move back to Lackawanna County after living in Florida. I get asked a lot, "Why would you leave sunny Florida to come back to Scranton?" And for me, it was easy. The warm hearts of the people here supersedes the warm weather there. Everyone's connected here. My grandparents had a bar and restaurant, and when I see patients who knew them, it's just a great feeling. My mom worked at RCA, which was a factory here that made TVs. When it closed, it was kind of devastating for the community, but my mom moved on from there. Now, when I, at my office, I see patients who knew my mother, my father, who builds houses. It's a great place. a great place to have a business. I started off about 15 years ago. I became an eye doctor. I first started at Boskov's Optical in the Steem Town Mall, Pearl Vision in Wilkes-Barre, but I felt like I couldn't grow. I felt like I couldn't do the full things I should do as an eye doctor. Just doing glasses and contacts wasn't enough. I wanted to do diseases of the eye like I was taught and treat people who have ocular diseases. Dr. Lee Besson in Peckville approached me, "Hi, I have a little space here. Do you want to come?" "Sure." 10 years ago, that was. I quickly outgrew the space, and about two years ago, I bought a building in Peckville. And I want to talk how Lackawanna County helped me with the building and also the renovations of the building. It took about a year of planning. I used Mike Muller and Fancy Parsley in Scranton. My father was my contractor. A year to design, a year to renovate, and got the building and built it to the practice that it is today. I got a grant from Lackawanna County. I found out from Mike Muller that there's a whole bunch of grants out there for people starting businesses, renovating their business. There's even a grant if you buy a new equipment and hire a new full-time employee. There was a grant for that. I applied for the facade improvement grant. So, we ripped off the front of the building, which was pretty old and, like, painted brick was kind of falling apart, and we replaced it with cultured stone. Three gigantic windows that overlooked the Lackawanna Heritage Trail and the Lackawanna River was blocked by having only two tiny windows. So, the grant for the improvement of the facade of the building helped me finish my project. We opened about a year ago, and now I'm in my 11th year in private practice. We're having a ribbon cutting ceremony next month on May 16th. I'd like to invite everyone here. I'm going to hand out invitations. I guess that's it. Also, community involvement. For 10 years, I was an active member of Junior League of Scranton. Coming back from Florida, I didn't know how to get back involved in the community, and I was kind of restless, a fish out of water, because I left here in 1994 and I moved back in 2005. Joining the Junior League of Scranton, being an active member for 10 years, I learned how to volunteer properly. We worked with Women's Resource Center. We used to create, oh, she's gone, but we created something called the Party Pantry, where we would have a party and everyone would bring birthday gifts. So, if a woman, a woman was at the Resource Center and their child had a birthday, they had a gift for them. I also worked with Cinderella's Closet with the Junior League and helped it become its own entity. What else? I also learned to volunteer, and I created my own fundraiser called Cocktails for a Cause. It's now in its 14th year. Cocktails for a Cause is a fundraiser I do that helps the Lackawanna Blind Association and also research to prevent blindness. So, Lackawanna County Blind Association helps those who are visually impaired get back into the community and gives them services. So, I do have some giveaways. So, if you have any questions for me, I have three pairs of glasses to give away today. I have free pens and invitations. But, I love questions. So, if anyone wants to ask me questions about business, eyes...
Well, I just, I just, well, first of all, I offer to you my belated welcome home.
Thanks.
And thank you. Thank you for coming back home and starting a business and having the courage to do that. You are yet another person that inspires the rest of the community to have the courage to do that, and that's why I had requested this business spotlight. And, you know, I just think it's just to spotlight people such as yourself throughout our county that are doing such a tremendous job for our community in being an inspiration and providing jobs and their services throughout our county, and staying home and showing that it can be done. And, it's okay to be here, and you can come up with your own ingenuity and own ideas on how to start your own business, and we're here to help you if you run into a problem.
The business is growing. I went from having one employee to now I have four.
Awesome.
Next year, I'm hiring a doctor, Katrina Caccio. She worked for me, and now she's in school in Boston to become a doctor, and I want her to come back home. She's from German, and she has a big family. So, my business is growing. We're creating jobs. So, it's a really good feeling to, to know it's not just my, my business, but it's my life, you know? We have, I think, five staff members now, from two to five.
That's amazing. And you're bringing somebody else here who's going to also bring more, more people back with them. It's just amazing. It's a chain reaction, and it's something that I always wanted to make sure that we could spotlight and show the community, because all three of us up here are small business owners. And, we know what it's like to be out there to not just, you know, get a paycheck, but sign the front of a check, and what goes along with that, and the hard work and dedication it requires to do that. So, I started my business with $164.
Wow.
Yeah, so it's 20-year anniversary this year, and, you know, that, that's something that I'm very proud of, and I know you're very proud of the work that you've done, as well as all the small businesses that are the backbone of Lackawanna County. We always talk about...
Helping people, so...
Yeah, we, we always talk about big business coming here, but, you know, we have our own citizens that are able to provide the economy and the jobs that we need here. And it's people like you that show that and are very inspirational to others. So, thank you so much for your courage.
You're welcome.
For all your hard work and dedication, and for, you know, saying that the warm hearts of people here are warmer than the Florida. So, that was nice. That was a nice statement. I got to get that off the tape so I can copy it if you don't mind. That was great. Thank you so much for coming in.
I really mean it. Thank you.
Commissioner Terry?
It's wonderful to have young people come back. I hope someday, maybe my children will come back. They'll have that opportunity. You, you've obviously done a great job. Keep up the good work, and it is a beautiful place to live. It's a great place to live, and it's understandable why people would want to come back. And for them to have the opportunity to create, make a living here and create a business and go forward is, is important, and that's what we work towards. And thank you for coming back.
Welcome. Thank you for having me. Any other questions?
Phone number. Rebecca, where do they call, where do they call you if they want to call the...
Okay, our phone number's pretty easy, easier than my last name. It's four eight nine U C. That's four eight nine eight seven three three. My last name is really long. Schoonover, I always say it's like schools over.
Schools over.
For like 20 years, actually. So, but yeah, four eight nine U C. We have a website. We're on Facebook. We're also on Instagram. The name of the Facebook page is Schoonover Eye Care. Our same with our Instagram page. The office is at 240 Main Street in Peckville. If you're familiar with Main Street, it's between Deckers Bridge and Pop Pops. It used to be the old Green Fire Lounge long ago, and, but now it's my...
Great pizza.
Yeah, and they still have the pizza, actually, up in, I think, by Montel Country Club.
Oh, they have it there.
A place called Laura's. Yeah. But, it's 2,000 square feet. It went from like 700 square feet to 2,000 square feet, and it's custom-built. It's a beautiful office. So, I hope you guys can come up on May 16th.
Lots of parking, very nice, great location.
Easy in, easy out. Beautiful views of the river and the Lackawanna Heritage Trail. Pretty much everything inside's custom-built. It's very welcoming. We have a welcome area, water station, fruit, happy music playing, just to make it seem less...
It's relaxing.
Yeah, less sterile, more welcoming, more inviting, and just a happy place. I could work forever. The patients can be happy and the community as well.
Thank you. You came back from Florida. You went outside the community, but home is where the heart's at. You came back here, you set up your own business.
I love it here, so...
Congratulations. And, you know, it's great that our economic community development was, Economic Development Department was here to help you, you know, put you over the finish line. But, your patients are like family to you. So, this is a lot more than like, you know, when someone comes in, you know them by their name.
Yep.
That's something you won't get down in Florida, but you're going to get that here in Lackawanna County.
Yeah, we're really caring. Like, when something happens to them, we feel like it happens to us, you know? There's, you know, I hug my patients. I talk to them. I listen to them. When something happens to them, I feel like it happens to me. We're all connected, and my office is really friendly, and everyone is like family. You have to treat people how you want to be treated, and good things are only going to come if you do the good yourself. So, that's what I try to emulate.
Congratulations. Great job. Commissioner Cummings?
So, today we offer a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Schoonover Eye Care in honor of achieving the designation of a Small Business Spotlight in Lackawanna County, given the 17th day of April 2019 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Notariani, and myself, Commissioner Lorraine Cummings. Come on up.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks for coming on.
Great job.
Very proud.
Sorry.
But, this, this is absolutely the perfect story. That's a great story.
Thank you, guys.
Everybody look here, smile. Take a couple.
Ready?
Yep.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Make sure if there's anything else, if you think of economic development and even equipment, Day of Options on equipment, too.
Can I give up the handouts before I go? Can I give up the handouts?
Sure. There's a great small business story. Like, they talk about Main Street, USA. That's really the, the story there.
That's right.
Great story. Yeah, you are Main Street, absolutely. Do we have the Managing Director of Financial Solutions here today? Okay. Oh, jeez, okay.
Oh, thank you.
It's Tom Durkin.
Tom Durkin.
Yeah, a little disappointing.
Let's talk about 2009.
Short old guy instead of a tall, handsome young man.
You're happy you're here.
First, let me extend Mike Ben's apology for not being here. He intended to be here this morning. He called me about 9:30 last night. He was in the middle of trying to close a bond for another municipality. They began selling those bonds at 9:00 AM yesterday morning. They were supposed to be done at 11:00 AM yesterday morning. At 9:30 last night, he was still in the process of trying to sell those bonds. So, he called me and apologized and said he wouldn't be able to make it. But, I can fill in very briefly. What he wanted to come up and talk about a little bit was the fact that, two years ago, the Commissioners approved a forward interest rate hedge. There was a 2009 bond issue that wasn't callable until September of 2019. We had an opportunity at the time, if we were able to refund that bond, or those bonds, to save between maybe $6 and $9 million on the future bond payments. But, under the new law that went into effect in '18, we weren't able to refund those bonds because you can't do any advanced refunding of non-taxable, or, or, excuse me, of non-taxable debt, right. So, we did a forward interest rate hedge, and now, the issue is actually, we're starting to do the work on the issue. We are able to do the actual bond issue 90 days before the actual call date. So, we're anticipating to close on these, this refinancing in June of this year for the bonds that are callable in September. And, as of yesterday, when I spoke to Michael, he told me that the current market value places the bonds at savings of about $7.5 million without extending the life of the refinanced bonds. And, he believes that that $7.5 million will hold until we go ahead and close these bonds in June. So, we're in process. We're working. The fact is that we set this all up by the Commissioners approving the advance, the forward interest rate lock back in 2017, and now it's coming to fruition, and, and the county stands to save $7.5 million when we complete it. That's all.
I would just like to say that our audits have been on, on time. What is it, seven years now, Tom? Seven years? Audits on time?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Audits on time. Rainy day account. We were in a situation at one point where we actually had a surveillance fee that was as high as $1 million. It was at $400,000 just to keep an eye on our bonds, and that was eliminated. And, in the start of 2016, we got our a-stable bond, or the end of, would it be December of 2015, we got our a-stable bond rating back. And, how much, how much debt have we financed? I'm not going to expect an absolute, but we've, right, refinanced a lot of debt.
We actually, Commissioner, my recollection is we had a, a refunding in 2016 of about $48 million. We saved $16 million on that specific refunding. In 2017, we did another refunding that saved us more than $5 million. And now, we're going to do this refunding this year. It's going to save us $7.5 million. Again, as I said, all of these refundings are done without extending the lives of any of the bond issues as well. So, it's not that we're just pushing these out longer to do the savings. It's, we're doing the same life or the same remaining life on the bonds, but it's predominantly interest rate savings is what saved us all that. So, with the $16 million in '16 and, and $5 million in, in 2017, and now $7.5 million, we're up around $28 million in savings from refundings that we've done since 2016, predominantly because of the a-stable bond rating.
Financial planning, stabilizing the county, fund balance, a-stable bond rating, all those ingredients make the savings that we have today. Am I right?
That is correct, Commissioner.
It is fabulous. Commissioner Cummings?
Good job, Tom.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Notariani?
Yep. Keep up the good work, Tom.
And I want people to think, like, this, we came up with this in 2017. We had to make a decision in 2017 for 2019, with the rates that were at that point. Now, no, I mean, we were, we talked to our financial people. They felt that we would be able to save money going that much forward. Am I right, Tom?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Two years into the future. So, this September, we're going to be signing off.
That's right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for the great work that you do. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only.
Somebody forget their paperwork? Joan Hoda-Wanat, 101 Penn Avenue, Scranton. I was kind of blown away by Mr. Yarn's story, and I, I thank you all for bringing him in here to give publicity to this issue. Having said that, I think this, his story is one that should be shared with all the young people in the area.
Right.
Not the old people like you and me, but especially the young people. On his way out, I asked him if his book was available for purchase at the Library Express, which is Scranton Public Library's bookstore slash library in Steem Town Mall, where the marketplace at Steem Town. And he said no. And I said, "You know, you need to go talk to Scott Thomas, the CEO of Scranton Public Library, and, and others, too. That book should be available for sale locally. He's a local author. Not only should that book be in the Library Express, but he should be there for a book signing, and there should be a lot of publicity about it. In addition, I think because he is a Lackawanna County author, copies of his books should be available in all our county libraries, and the few remaining...
Joan, can I inject for a second? You're on the board there.
I know.
What are we going to have in all those libraries in a month or two from now?
I'm sorry? Oh, swing on mine.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk about that next...
No, but I want to tell them what books are going to be in those libraries, because I'm sure that this is something you're going to be pushing forward, and we're, we're here to make sure of it.
Yeah. But, at any rate, I, I think that copies of his books should be in all county libraries. He is a local author, and I think all local authors should be in our libraries. Also, the school district libraries throughout the county. Okay? God forbid that the Scranton School District should, you know, buy a book, but that, that's a whole nother issue. But, at any rate, I think it was wonderful that you brought him in here, and the more publicity he gets, the better, because that's a story that should be told. He may be one out of 100 people that has an adverse reaction, but everybody should be alerted to the fact that it can be you next.
That's right.
Okay. Gary, I, I was surprised and happy to see no other legal fees. We're on a roll, guys. We're on a roll. And, Resolution 19-0088, the Guaranteed Energy Savings Amendment. I read that, and I was very pleased to see that the Children's Library got added to that mechanical services agreement. I think it's wonderful that, you know, that's an old building, but it is a county asset, and I'm glad to see that you're keeping it in mind for items like this and mechanical repairs. I think...
Joan, we knew if we didn't, that you'd be here telling us about it.
I'd be up here saying, but, you know, I mean, you're actually saving taxpayer dollars in the long run.
It's a great building, and the kids love it, and you know the summer that...
And, Resolution 19-0088, the Guaranteed Energy Savings Amendment. I read that, and I was very pleased to see that the children's library got added to that mechanical services agreement. I think it's wonderful that, you know, that's an old building, but it is a county asset, and I'm glad to see that you're keeping it in mind for items like this and mechanical repairs.
Joan, we knew if we didn't, that you'd be here telling us about it.
I'd be up here saying, but you know, I mean, you're actually saving taxpayer dollars in the long run.
It's a great building, and the kids love it, and you know the summer that there's a lot of great things that go on there.
Okay, and I'll be up again at the end of the meeting, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers from 280200 through 280910 inclusive, totaling Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $2,855,484.57.
Okay. Gary, how are we, everything good to go?
Everything's in order, Commissioners.
Good. Does the board have any questions for Gary?
I do, about that check that was written, so there was a check in the payables for $25,000 that we approved for a loan that was written out.
Yes, Commissioner.
Is there any of those loans in here today, anywhere that you know of?
I don't believe that there are. Let me just check with people in my office.
Are you aware of anything? Any other loans?
Could you please make sure that if there is, that I get a notice on my payables form to know that they were and what they were for? I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Gary. Thank you to your staff. Like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Yes. 19-0088.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is entering into Guaranteed Energy Savings Amendment. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a Guaranteed Energy Savings Agreement Amendment Number Four by and between the McClure Company and the County of Lackawanna. Here to speak on this is our Chief Financial Officer with an awesome Easter tie, Tom Durkin.
Good, Tom.
Thank you, Fran, I don't get much opportunity to wear an Easter tie.
That's right.
What this is, Commissioners, is, as you're aware, back in 2015, actually, the end of 2014, we entered into an agreement with McClure Company to do an energy savings project countywide. Predominantly, most of the work was done back then at the county prison. We needed to replace the HVAC system, which they did. They did building envelope work at the prison, they changed the lights to LEDs. They did some of those things in other county buildings, the courthouse, the Gateway Center, the buildings at the parks. They also did a considerable amount of work on the plumbing at the prison and the water to save what amounted to more than $300,000 per year. Actually, in 2016, the first year that the, the new stuff was available to work at the prison, between electric and water and sewer bills, we saved about $360,000 that year. But anyway, we entered into an agreement with McClure Company back then. The original agreement was a three-year agreement for them to maintain our HVAC systems in Lackawanna County. We renewed that agreement for a five-year term. This agreement, we renewed that, I believe it was the beginning of 18, but this agreement, we're entering into an agreement because when we renewed the agreement last time, we knew that we were going to be out of the Adams Avenue and Spruce Street building, and in this building during the term of this contract. So, we negotiated with McClure, and we were able to get them to agree to remove the Adams Avenue and Spruce Street building and add the government center at the Globe Store to the contract, in addition to adding, adding the children's library, because that had kind of fallen through the cracks when we started this process, and that wasn't covered by the agreement. But, at no additional cost to the county, we're just swapping out the one building for the two new buildings, and that's what this is, to amend the contract to include this building in the children's library through the term of the original contract.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Durkin? This is a good contract, it's going to be there for, for the future, for the buildings that we control at this point. I think it's going to be very helpful to us.
It's, yeah, they've done a very, very good job.
Done a very, yeah, a very good job.
We, as a matter of fact, Commissioner, the Gateway Building had been a problem, the Jefferson Avenue Building, had been a problem from an HVAC perspective for a considerable time. When you turn the heat on, the air conditioning came on, and vice versa. Under the terms of this contract, McClure went through with Mike Logan, a county maintenance man who was hired to help with the HVAC, and updated the inner, internal workings of the system in the Gateway Building, to the point where it is now working better than it has, at least in my 15-plus years of, of service to the county. And we, if not this week, it's next week, I'm not sure exactly when the inception date is, we're going to replace the units on top of the, the Jefferson Avenue Building. So, that HVAC system in that building is going to be state-of-the-art and working beautifully, hopefully for 20 years or so to come. And again, that, that's been our experience with McClure, they've done really good work for us, and we expect them to continue that for the next three and a half years of this contract.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Like to make a motion entering an agreement, entering into a Guaranteed Energy Savings Amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, Tom. Tom doesn't have to go too far. 19-0089.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is entering into an agreement with E-CIVIS. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an E-CIVIS Master Subscription and Service Agreement for an online centralized grant accounting service, term to commence immediately and expire on March 31, 2022. And here to speak on it is our CFO, Tom Durkin.
Thank you. This is, as the Commissioners are aware, a renewal of a contract that we entered into three years ago with a company named E-CIVIS. E-CIVIS is a company that provides a centralized accounting system for grant accounting. We've had issues for a long time, centralizing our accounting for grants, because the county of Lackawanna has many, many different departments, there may be as many as eight or 10 different departments, that have state and federal grants that are awarded to them, and it's very, very difficult to get all of those people who manage those grants in the various departments on the same page. So, that was the initial reason that we looked into E-CIVIS three years ago. However, as you're aware, we've also found that, that something probably even more valuable than that is provided by E-CIVIS. They have a grant and foundation database that they provide us under the terms of this agreement, where we can go in and look for grants or funds from foundations perhaps, to provide the county with monies that we may not have otherwise known about. For the most part, Sandy Upshinsky in Economic Development uses this a lot, and I know that, I can't even begin to name the grants that we've received because of this, but I know Sandy uses it a lot, Tom Arduino in my own department uses it a lot, and I know that the Controllers Department uses it significantly, and when they're able to find grants for, for things, they'll reach out to other departments and, and, you know, Sandy, the Controllers Office, and Tom Arduino will try to help other departments, and it's been tremendously successful. I, I can't even begin to guess what the numbers are, but I'm certain that we have gained more than a million dollars in grants through this, this program since we've been using it three years ago.
Oh, at least. Stafford Industrial Park was one of them, wasn't it?
That's, that is correct, Commissioner.
This was, we were talking about this four years ago, and the inception was three years ago. This absolutely makes our grant writing and opportunities vastly more than we've ever had before, am I right, Tom?
That is correct, Commissioner.
And it has paid for itself, 100 times, over and over and over, over again. So, no, I think this is great.
So, this is, is just a renewal of that original three-year term for another three years.
Cool.
At a small increase, we, we, for the first three years, paid $20,000 a year. The new agreement clauses for to pay, I think it's $21.70 a year, that we're going to pay for the next three years.
Does the board have any questions for Tom?
I'd like to see that study, Tom, so can we get that done?
You'd like to see what, Commissioner?
The comparables. That would be interesting to me, to see the comparables on how much money we've gained or lost in having this, along with other people that do the grants. So, if, if we could do that.
The numbers, as far as the grants that we've gained through this, that'll take a little bit of time, Commissioner, but I will be happy to do that, I'll get that information to you.
Thank you very much.
It's going to be overwhelming. I'd like to make a motion entering into an agreement with E-CIVIS. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Commissioners.
19-0090.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is approving a local economic revitalization tax assistance property in Jessup Borough. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County regarding eligibility under LERTA for property tax exemption for a certain deterioration property located in Jessup Borough. Whereas, the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania passed Act 76 of 1977, and known as the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, LERTA, authorizing local taxing authorities to grant a tax exemption for certain improvements constructed on defined deteriorated properties. And, whereas, in accordance with the procedures set forth in the LERTA statute, the Borough Council of the Borough of Jessup, Lackawanna County, has held hearings to define the boundaries of the deteriorated areas within the borough. And, whereas, as set forth in Jessup Borough Ordinance Number Two, 2019, enacted on March 4, 2019, the borough has determined that an approximately 64.64 acre property known as the BHR Development Group LLC property, Lackawanna County PIN numbers 126.02-010-0002, 26.40 acres, and 126.02-010-003, 38.24 acres, is a deteriorated property and is entitled to 10 years of exemption from municipal real estate tax property taxes under LERTA, following an exemption schedule that was duly adopted as part of the ordinance. And, whereas, at its regular meeting held on March 18, 2019, the Board of Directors of the Valley View School District adopted a resolution providing that the same approximately 64.64 acre property known as the BHR Development Company Group LLC property, Lackawanna County PIN numbers 126.02-010-002, 26.40 acres, and 126.02-010-003, 38.24 acres, shall be exempt under LERTA. Whereas, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, acting pursuant to LERTA and the Act, likewise desire to provide the properties described here within Exhibit A with a tax exemption as set forth pursuant to LERTA. Now therefore, be it resolved that for 10 years, beginning on the latter of the first day of the first full tax year, following the issuance of the new assessment in connection with the completion of the improvements, or January 1, 2020, and such tax exemption shall continue for a term of 10 years from the date thereof, and shall be exempt from real estate taxes and will otherwise be owed to Lackawanna County as a result of the increase in assessment attributed to the cost of such improvements constructed on the, for said property. Section Two Exemption Schedule. The schedule of real estate taxes to be exempted shall be in accordance with the below portion of improvements for each year. Length percentage, first year 90%, second year 80%, third year 70%, fourth year 60%, fifth year 50%, sixth year 40%, seventh year 30%, eighth year 20%, ninth year 10%, 10th year 5%. Upon the completion of the 10-year exemption schedule terms set forth above, the exemption from taxes shall end, and the entire property, land and building, shall be fully subject to county property taxes. The exemption from taxes granted under this resolution shall be upon the property and shall not terminate upon the sale or exchange of the property. Procedure for obtaining exemption. A copy of the request for exemption shall be forwarded to the Lackawanna County Board of Assessment in Jessup Borough by the taxpayer. Upon completion of the improvement or within 90 days, the taxpayer shall notify Jessup Borough, Lackawanna County, the Valley View School District, and Lackawanna County Board of Assessment, so that the Lackawanna County Board of Assessment may assess the new construction or improvements separately for the purpose of calculating the amount of the assessment eligible for tax exemption in accordance with the limits established in this resolution. The LERTA exemptions have been adopted by the Borough of Jessup by Ordinance Number Two, adopted on March 4, 2019, and the Board of Directors of Valley View School District, Resolution adopted on March 19, 2019. Failure of either municipal body to so adopt shall render this resolution null and void. This resolution shall be in full force and effective upon adoption, adopted at a regular meeting at the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 17, 2019. And here to speak on this is Attorney Patrick J. Lovell.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here this morning on behalf of BHR Development LLC. They are the owners of a approximately 64-acre tract of land. It's situated in Jessup. It's in the Jessup section of the Valley View Business Park. It's on, adjacent to Route 247, it's approximately a quarter of a mile off of the Casey Highway. The zoning that pertains to it is approved for warehouse distribution. The development plan, which has already been submitted to the Planning Commission, and for ultimate consideration by Jessup Borough Council, is to build a 750,000 square foot warehouse and distribution center. Civil drawings have been completed, and they are in fact submitted to Jessup Borough. I can tell you that there's two developers who are currently in position to purchase the subject property, waiting on the approval of this LERTA by the county. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions? I'd just like, for the viewing audience, to understand how this works, goes to the school board, council, and then it comes to the county, and then we're the final approval for LERTA. Undeveloped land, this probably, it's never been developed, I'm sure that there's certain points of property, there was no taxes ever even being paid on it, and we have an opportunity here to bring jobs into the community, and we have two investors that are looking at these properties. This is a great opportunity for Lackawanna County, and our highway system is second to none, the Casey Highway to 81, you know what I mean, we're, we're right there. And this is right off, there's 247 right in front of it, it's, it's right off the Casey Highway.
Perfect location.
It's a great opportunity. So, I'd like to make a motion approving local economic revitalization tax assistance property in Jessup Borough. Do I have a second? Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Patrick, thank you for coming in, and I think it's going to be, it's going to be a great opportunity for all the citizens.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Entering into a purchase agreement for the prison. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a purchase and sale agreement with NUCTEC US Incorporated after receiving the recommendation of the prison board for the purchase, installation, and warranty of a body scanner inspection system to be placed at the prison, to be paid for by the prison canteen funds. And here to speak on this issue is Warden Tim Betty.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Warden.
Just briefly, it's a five-year deal that we're looking at with NUCTEC Body Inspection System, they're a Delaware corporation, that, that purchase price will include five years of an extended warranty, running $18,000 total for the extended warranty. So, the, the, the contract that's been provided shows a bottom line price of $113,000, that would be five years. Think of it as bumper to bumper, everything, software, parts, everything included with the warranty.
Tim, this is a safety, this is a, a tool for safety, am I right?
Absolutely.
This scans anything in your body. So, you know, we have, we have a food provider that comes in, this can scan the employees, because the biggest thing with prisons, you know, is people try to bring in contraband. And, this is something like, and a lot of times, our corrections officer staff has to search people, literally, and they still will be doing that. But, this is a quick, this will scan them completely until they have these weapons, drugs, tobacco, any type of contraband. Talk a little bit about that, Tim, how much easier it's going to make it for...
Absolutely. What we have discovered, with our little bit of homework that we did, is prisons that have this, or a similar type of body scanner, are getting a lot more honesty out of newly committed people. Before they go through that scanner, they're giving up whatever they have on them voluntarily, because they know it's going to be discovered. They're pretty much given the option, we're going to put you through the scanner, if we find anything, you know, you're going to get, you're going to get in trouble for that. Otherwise, if you have something on your person, hand... Otherwise, if you have something on your person, hand it over now and we'll address it. I mean, of course, if it's an illegal substance, it'll go to the authorities for their decision what to do with that. So it's great on the front end, and it's great on, as Hughes suggested Commissioner, it's great for individuals who come in and out of the prison all day long.
Safety for the staff.
Absolutely.
More efficient timeline in getting people in and out of the prison. We have people coming off mountain crew. You know, I mean, we have a lot of people that are out, you know, I mean, they come in and out all the time, coming back from court. It's just, there's so many different things that can be utilized along the way that, you know what I mean?
Correct, correct.
And have an understanding of what you have to go through in searching people and being able, and you understand, when people come off the street sometimes, they're coming off the street and they might be high on drugs, they might be on drugs, they might be drunk. This can scan them without having to strip search them, because they have to be searched before they come into the premises of the prison. So as soon as they get into that area of the prison, they're being searched. A lot of people are combative at that point. This gives them an opportunity just to scan them, and we can just let them sit in the cell till they cool down, right?
Yeah, absolutely, yes. So win-win-win for all sides, I believe.
Yeah, I think it is too. Okay. Let's wait for Commissioner Cummings. I think she wanted to vote this. Okay. Nineteen dash zero zero nine one. I'd like to make a motion entering the purchase agreement for the prison. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Thank you Warden.
Thank you.
And we've, we've been talking about this scanner for like the last
Yes.
three months. So this is something that we're all very aware of. Nineteen dash zero zero nine two.
Thank you Commissioner, this is awarding arts and culture grant mini-grants. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award an arts and culture mini-grants to the following community organizations. Dalton Borough, five hundred dollars for the Christmas tree lighting. Elmhurst Township in Roaring Brook, a thousand dollars collaboration for the entertainment at this summer Fireman's Picnic in Elmhurst. German Borough, five hundred dollars for entertainment for the German Summer Free Community Concert in the park. And here to speak on the grants is our Deputy Director of Arts and Culture, Maureen McGuigan.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning Maureen.
These are just the rolling grants that you hear. It's a nice way to promote what's going on in the county though. These communities apply every year for these great community events, so we're happy to support them.
Bands, these are different little events.
Yeah, Dalton's even getting the jump on Christmas, so that's good.
We're getting prepared, huh?
Yeah, the other two will be, yeah, it's great. There's a lot of, you could travel all around the county going to concerts and summer events that are supported through these grants.
There's a lot of things. There's something to do in Lackawanna County all the time if you want to go and look for it. Great. Board have any questions for Ms. McGuigan?
No.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion awarding the arts and culture mini-grants. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Nineteen dash zero zero nine five.
Thank you Commissioner, this is a resolution granting the Scranton Tomorrow funding request. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby grant the cultural partnership funding request for the Scranton Tomorrow run organizations for the July third fireworks display, for additional funds in the amount of twenty-five-hundred dollars to support the increased expense for a total amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Here once again to speak on the resolution is Director of Arts and Culture, Maureen McGuigan.
Well, July is closer than we think, so we're starting to plan the fireworks, since Grant and Tomorrow has been a really great partner in running that portion for us organizing the actual firework display. So this is the sponsorship that covers that cost.
Stupendous event, family fun, down at the courthouse, thousands of people. Phil Harmonic this year.
Yes.
Phil Harmonic is going to be back this year. It's just great family fun. It's safe. It's just a great time of the year.
We love seeing how it's increased. People love it being on the courthouse, and it's just a really nice event.
Sitting in the lawn seats, very, 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 very nice. Does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion granting this Grant and Tomorrow funding request. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks Maureen. Nineteen dash zero zero eight one.
Thank you Commissioner, this is appointments to the Workforce Development Board. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Workforce Development Board. Drew Simpson, Carpenter's Union, term to begin immediately and expires on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Thomas Bailey's, Career Technology Center of Lackawanna County, term to begin immediately and to expire on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individuals to the Workforce Development Board, two-year term to begin immediately and to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty. William Bott, owner Billy Bott Custom Building Concrete and title LLC.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion appointment to the Workforce Development Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Nineteen dash zero zero eight six.
Thank you Commissioner, this is appointments to the Agricultural Land Preservation Board. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby make the following reappointments to the Agricultural Land Preservation Board. Larry Seymour, ten fifty-two Hack Road Factoryville, eighteen four one nine, elected township official, three-year term effective immediately and expiring on December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Margaret Huff Hull, five hundred Kennedy Creek Road, Abington Township, one-eight four one four, farm representative, term effective immediately and expiring on December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Roy Kitch, eleven ninety-eight Amasa Road, Benton Township, one-eight four three three, builder, contractor, developer, term effective immediately and expiring on December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Brian Manning, five fifty-two Kennedy Creek Road, North Abington Township, one-eight four one four, farm representative, term effective immediately and expiring on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And Mary Liz Donato, three oh two Bear Creek Acres Drive, Madison Township, one-eight four four four, term effective immediately and to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Would you like to say anything about the...
That's agricultural land preservation.
Okay.
But thank you, yeah, and I, yes, but thank you for recognizing that.
Absolutely. I'd like to make a motion for the appointment, the Agricultural Land Preservation Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Sorry, I had to run.
Sure.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, one oh one Penn Avenue Scranton. I want to begin by complimenting Commissioner O'Malley, who attended a meeting at Colts, a call to action. What was it, April ten?
Absolutely.
Now, this, this issue needs to get a lot more publicity, so I'm hoping that local TV stations and the paper will pick it up and start rolling with this, because this has a major impact.
Joan, I don't really speak, really speak during this time. I just want to, you know, Bob just told me that they're just waiting to see what's going to happen in Harrisburg. They felt that everything's going to be, should be okay on this. That's why we didn't do anything immediately, because I want to make sure that we have these blue buses. And like you said, you're right, to make sure that the people have...
Yeah, well, just in case it's not.
We're going to jump right on them.
I think we need to alert people that this could be a potential problem. There's a problem called the Medical Assistance Transportation Program, which provides transportation to seniors and the disabled to get to medical appointments, currently provided by the county. The state had decided last year that'd be a good thing to privatize this service, okay? Well, that may sound good on the surface. Right now, but I hope what you're saying, Commissioner O'Malley, is that they might not go through with this.
That's what, I don't want to really get into it, but when I talk to Mr. Few about it, but if they, if there's a situation... If there's a situation, we're going to be on top of it, because these are senior citizens and people that have some kind of situation where they're not able to drive themselves.
Yes, and they're dependent upon this type of transportation.
And we got to make sure that they're safe and they get what they want to be.
Yeah. If worse came to worse, this is what's being jeopardized. This medical assistance transportation is thirty percent of the ridership of Colts Shared Ride Program. They would be forced to use a private service. Very likely what they would see was that the number of trips would be cut. They will see increased fares, and Colts drivers would face potential layoffs. And then would also impact Colts' fixed route bus service, because with funding being cut to the shared ride program, Colts be forced to subsidize it with fixed route funding, which means they would have to cut some of their fixed routes, both and also their operating hours, and again, more potential layoffs. When what we should be doing with Colts is expanding their service, especially the fixed routes, so that we could provide service in the evenings and to areas of the county where people are trying to get jobs and they have no transportation to get to jobs, because when people work, they pay into the tax base. So I'm hoping that this thing gets resolved. I haven't seen anything in the press since we met at Colts a week ago. But if worse comes to worse, this will need a lot of publicity and a lot of action on terms of, you know, local legislators. We cannot let our seniors and our disabled pay the price for this. And in fact, all of Colts' ridership will pay, because it'll have, have a domino effect. I ride the bus, not because I have to, but because I'm cheap. Most people who ride the bus on a regular basis ride it because they need to. You know, they don't have transportation of their own, or whatever reason. But I would hate to see them pay the penalty. So I just wanted to raise that as an issue, so it doesn't come down to the crunch. Next, one of the nice things that the city is doing is it's giving, starting to give publicity to the need for a full count in the twenty twenty census. Is the county planning any kind of publicity on this, or any kind of effort on the census next year?
Well, I'm, I'm assuming our county's always there for anything that they need, so...
One of the things I learned is that for every person we fail to count, we lose two thousand dollars in potential funding. Now, I give you this little sheet that Glynnis Johns provided to the city, forty-eight ways in which census data is used.
Thanks Joan.
Thanks Joan. I couldn't see this actually. I know, I know a lot of it is about funding a lot of other situations.
Yes.
There's a lot of different things. But no, our, our county's always open to help any, like I said. So, Commissioner O'Malley, could you reach out to the Census Bureau and see if there's anything that we can be helpful with? Because it is true, I know that we're always there, and I know that we call, if they call, there's always a helping hand, but if there's anything extra we can help them with, just to make sure they absolutely, not only know exactly who's living here.
What the city has done is they're starting a census count committee, full count committee, so that, because the city has had quite an influx of refugees from Bhutan and Nepal and the Congo. We have a lot of non-English speaking people. We need to make sure that every resident is counted, okay? Or we're just, we're just cutting off our nose to spite our face. You know, we're going to lose money in public funding and tax money.
Are illegal people counted in the census?
What's that?
Are illegal people counted in that census?
I'm not sure.
That's being litigated nationwide right now.
So I just wanted to bring it to you.
They're not legal citizens. They shouldn't be counted.
The issue's being litigated right, right now. There's a case up on appeal, because I've been watching that for, for a lot of reasons.
Well, yeah, I mean, if they want to sanctuary the city, let the city pay for it. Why should we pay for it?
California, if I'm not mistaken. I think they won the first round, but that, you know, that doesn't mean that much. It'll be in appeal. It's under litigation right now.
Good. Okay, thanks Joan.
But anything the county can do to raise awareness countywide, I think would be a good thing, because we're going to turn around twice and the census is going to be upon us. Okay.
Joan, just real quickly, as I said, I usually don't speak during this, but we could, if the census has something, we can always make sure that we send it out through community relations to let all the different municipalities understand what we're looking at, and you know what I mean? They're the people that actually would know exactly who's probably living in some of their smaller, outlying areas.
Yes. But, but, you know, I mean, it needs to be an aggressive effort. The municipalities and maybe supported by the county, get everyone possible counted, because we need those numbers. It affects the school district, it affects the municipalities, and it'll affect the county. So we need to do it. Next thing. I wrote a letter to the editor about local governments having a new hiring policy, especially for public employees, so that, you know, we make sure that when someone's applying for a job, their taxes and their fees are paid, and when they're, get their annual performance review, and if and when they get promoted, you know. So we make sure, because you can't draw a tax-funded salary on one hand and not pay your just debts with the other. And if there is an issue, you do what is reasonable. You ask for an approved payment plan, but you just don't ignore your, your duty to pay your taxes and your fees. And then I sat down and I thought, I says, oh my God. Okay, I don't know what the total number of delinquent real estate taxes are, but I do know this. Back in nineteen eighty-two, the people of this county voted for a library tax. And everyone who fails to pay their property tax is cheating, not just me as a taxpayer, but they're cheating my library. And I'm not going to stand for that, you know, I won't. I would love to be able to crunch the numbers and see what the library would get, the county libraries would get, if everybody paid those delinquent taxes. And I may look that up, because you know, as a retiree, I can do anything I want to do with my time. And you know me, you know, you're cheating my library. I'm coming after you. You know, there is no safe place to hide from me. You can run, but you can't hide. And I understand, like Fran did the right thing. She did a payment plan as soon as she realized that, you know, there was an issue. She did the right thing. I, I understand that there are a lot of people who have financial issues, emergencies. You just don't blow off your taxes and your fees, period. You can't have your cake and eat it too, especially if you're a public employee. But I'm going to go after everybody, public and private. I don't care. That's my library. My library exists to serve the people of this community, and you're not going to cheat them, or you're going to tell me why, because I'm paying it, and everybody else that I know is paying it. So enough about that. Okay, now, I thought I'd be eating downstairs in your Charmont Restaurant on April first. I hear it's pushed back to mid-May? Thereabouts?
I would think probably middle of May.
Okay. All right. Now, I understand that Mr. Majewski, I'm probably saying this wrong, is going to pay fifteen hundred dollars a month as the less C. Is that correct?
Two thousand.
Fifteen hundred dollars a month as the less C?
Two thousand.
Two thousand? It's actually two thousand dollars a month?
We increased it, yeah.
You increased it, okay. Let me ask you something. Am I right in assuming that as the less C, he will be paying the business, mercantile, and privilege taxes? He will be paying taxes, because that's a for-profit endeavor?
Yeah.
So he will be paying taxes. If I look him up next year, I won't see delinquent taxes.
Yep.
Okay, okay, because, you know, we have, you know, these entities at the University of Scranton and other places, you know, they're nonprofits, they're non-tax entities, like you're a non-tax entity, but you got a for-profit entity going to be in the building, so I'm going to be looking to make sure he pays taxes. Okay, I'm sorry, but that's the way I am. Okay. I was, as I said earlier, I was happy to see we had no additional legal fees on the payment register. But I'm concerned about these salaries to people that are being paid on administrative leave. They seem to be continuing. I read the story about Mr. George McHale, who was acquitted of sexual assault charges last February, and it looks like he got his job back on April third, but because of an internal investigation, he's been put on paid administrative leave. Is that correct?
We'll answer under Commissioners' new business.
Okay. Now, I understand that he also received sixty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-three cents in back pay. That should be, I guess, in addition to his administrative leave pay. But I think we should start keeping track of these admin leave pays for people who are, you know, under investigation or pending trial or whatever, because that's also coming out of my, my pocket. There was another person in the paper, somebody named Samantha Heinrich. It appears that she was Lackawanna County Prison Counselor who was arrested, and she was placed on administrative leave until she resigned her position. So her salary on administrative So her salary on administrative leave is coming out of my pocket. And she resigned, so I don't know whether she's going to get rehired, but these, these salaries add up. And these are people who are not at work, you know, earning their paycheck. And I understand there are legal issues, but we should still keep track of that. Next, what is this county suite at PNC Field? I saw a story about a Mr. Bill McDonald, who apparently is the gatekeeper for who gets those 16 suite tickets. I would like to see a written policy on how any Lackawanna County resident can request a ticket. It should be in writing, publicly available, and I would also like to see records kept of who gets the tickets and why. Do we have a written policy on that currently? That if I want, I mean, I don't want to go to the baseball games, but if I did, could I get on the county website or call somebody and say, you know, how do I request a ticket?
Pretty sure you can.
Say again?
We don't Commissioners' New Business.
You'll answer that and Commissioners' Business? Okay, thank you. You know, as a little girl, I remember we had some sirens. This is when we thought we were going to get nuked. We had sirens in the city. Do we not have any more sirens in the city? And so if we have a tornado at 1:00 in the morning, it'll wake people up? No?
Don't have them anymore. They don't even have musics. Do they have musics?
That's before your time, Maureen.
No, it's not. No, it's not, Joan.
Yeah, but we used to have sirens. They used to test them. I remember that as a little child.
I remember them at 9:00 o'clock every night. Yeah, they'd go off, yeah.
Okay, but I was wondering, you know, you got, you got the phone app and everything else, but if you're sound asleep and you turned your phone off, you're not going to hear anything.
That's right.
Okay, so, I don't know, do we need sirens in this day of global warming? We're going to have a tornado a year? I don't know. But, so, that's about it for today. I'll be back. Oh, when is, when is your next meeting on the road? Have you decided that? Is it June?
Yeah, May 20, when is it?
Day 29th.
Okay, about a month from now. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Until next week, or next, next meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Cummings?
Okay, just the Chase Yarns coming in. You know, I met Chase at one of our events, and he was telling me his story, and I read his book, and everybody knows that I've been talking about marijuana and the recreational, passing of recreational, if they decide to do that. If they do, to the other commissioners, this is one of the things that we're going to have to be dealing with. And unfortunately, it's been promoted as, as safe and not having any ill effects. It's just something that, you know, they, they claim anybody that complains about the effects of it as Reefer Madness, whatever that means, I don't know, it's some movie or something. But this is why people don't, don't help people like him. He goes to the ER and they just send him home and say he's going to sleep it off. They don't take it seriously. This is why the kid that he was with, or the group that he was with, didn't take him seriously when he said he doesn't feel right, something's wrong. And they just took him to his college dorm and told him, you know, nothing's wrong. That cannot be, the perception, people have got to stop with the way that they handle the stigma on being afraid of the reaction, of the symptoms of being high. That's what he was describing up there, is what it felt like to be high, and then he went into a flight or fight syndrome. And, you know, it's, it lasted, it's still going on. Numerous kids have had this, that have one, one incident of using marijuana. If you go onto YouTube, you can watch people, these kids describing what had happened to them, and how, you know, they were afraid to tell anyone, but in the end had to tell their parents, because they literally thought they were going to die, and it was never going to go away, ever. This, they were never going to not be high anymore, this feeling of not being in their own body, and whatever other symptoms that they, they expressed. So it's serious, and it's some, and it's, I've been talking about this for a long time. I just, you know, I really wish that, you know, people would take these symptoms, this, just more seriously and not try to harass and berate and belittle people for bringing up the fact that there are side effects to this. And, you know, I will continue to talk about it regardless of what I'm told by anyone. You know, this is something that I don't want to see happen to anyone's child. I just don't ever, I wouldn't want anybody to have to suffer with this. So I'll continue to talk about it, even though people tell me not to, but that's okay, because I'm a nurse, I care about our community, I'm a commissioner, and you have to know all sides. You can't just don't know one side of an issue, you have to know all sides. And this is what happened with, same thing with alcohol, same thing with tobacco, same thing with opioids. You know, it was, the, the bad effects of it were hidden, and now we see the repercussions years down the road. Let's not have the same thing happen again with this. And I'm, I'm not going to stop talking about it, no matter how many people threaten me, or no matter, no matter how many phone calls I have to tape and send over to the District Attorney's Office, I will continue to talk about it regardless of the threats that come at me. And I just wish the press would take it more seriously and start, and start talking about it, rather than trying to berate people for bringing out the facts about it. And I hope he gets more attention so that people that do have these symptoms aren't afraid to speak up and go and get the help that they need. In regards to Colts, thank you for going to that meeting.
Sure.
I hope that that all works out, and I'll be following that, that issue as well. And the census, I hope, I hope we have more information on that. I'm not sure what we would do with the information for the census. I don't know what role we would play, but if there's something we could do, I'd be happy to help. And as far as the stadium, that was something that was set up a while ago. The guy volunteers his time. If anyone calls and asks him to use that suite, I believe they're always welcome to use it. You know, I mean, these are groups that, you know, autism awareness groups and...
Jury Center, Society, you name it.
I don't go to the games. I've never rented the suite, or whatever you do with the suite, but I do know a group that my, my assistant had asked for, was with the Heart of Hearing, the cochlear implant group. So it's more, you know, nonprofit groups that utilize the, the box is what, how they do it. And like I told them, I'm not a sports enthusiast, so I really, I just go with my daughter to throw the ball out at the opening night in 4th of July. I'd be happy to tell, I mean, I know when I went, because I don't go often. You know, I usually go on the holiday and opening night. Actually, I think all of our employees try to get there for opening night. We have to promote what we have, and that's our role. Part of our role is to promote our, the things that we have. You know, and I think that's, that's about it. Like, I, I don't know what more to say. I mean, I, the guy didn't want to talk to me. And when we were at Dunmore High School, Mr. Bowman, who was here, somebody had said, well, why is Maureen hiding in the corner or something? I was being interviewed by another, by another TV crew.
Fox Network.
Fox, it was Fox, that's why I was trying to think, Fox. And Mr. Bowman didn't want to talk to me, so, as I said, I said, you want me next or what? And he goes, nope, I just needed Mr. O'Malley. So I guess it was your day to get picked on, you know?
Commissioner?
You were discussing this, and you indicated that I don't think you've ever stayed for a full game at any time when you're there.
I may have on the, on, on opening night, but...
Never used any, I don't know, the Commissioners have ever used it for a political...
Oh, absolutely not. And for anyone to, to presume, that is ridiculous. That has never happened. That is not what that's, is that what they're saying?
That was, I think, a letter from someone.
Hit the mic, hit the mic.
It's not on.
Hit the mic, we can set the light on.
There you go.
Some remarks to that effect, yes, that's what I heard.
Well, no, it is absolutely not used for political...
That's why I had asked that you clear it.
Absolutely not.
It's utilized for the betterment of Lackawanna County.
For charitable organizations that want to use the, the suite, they, they go there and, you know, I think there's been kids and veterans, I know, I've, I've referred veterans over, you know, I mean, that's ridiculous.
Joan, I think I can answer part of that a little bit easier. I had a box at one point, I shared it with two other businesses, and it is extremely difficult. There's, there's a lot of games and they're all in a row, and then they're gone for a while. Extremely difficult to fill that on a regular basis. Mr. McDonald does a phenomenal job doing that. Someone to, maybe he should be compensated by the county or by the Red Rail Riders. It's, it becomes very, I've only had it for five years, and I had two other partners in it. And it really gets to be, I would give it to nursing homes, Boy Scouts, Little Leagues. It's, it's not used for political purposes. People do ask for tickets. We probably should, we should definitely keep a better record of it. That would be something smart for us to do. I think we could talk about that, and we'll be able to get that resolved. And I think it should be better records of, you know, who does use it and how it's used. And maybe we can put it on our website, and then our quarterly flyer, explain to people how they can use it. But it really isn't something that's been abused, at least not intentionally. It may happen on occasion where something happens, but it's not something. And Bill McDonald, as a volunteer for that particular case, does do a good job. People are used to reaching out to him, and they, they know who he is. He's been in this, the community forever, a former teacher, former businessman, well-respected. And again, I know how, how hard it was for me to fill that on a regular basis as a private citizen, as, you know, I paid for the box. So I think that, you know, we'll, we'll talk about getting better controls on it, but that's not something that was ever used, to my knowledge, for a political event. You can get, get at least a box from the, from the Rail Riders or in the past, the Red Barons to do fundraisers, that is allowable. But the Commissioners' box, I don't recall ever, even in past history, being a part of that. So I think, again, we will certainly work on that together, and get that going in the right direction. But at this point, we probably should thank Mr. McDonald for doing it without being compensated for it. I think somehow or another, he should be compensated for the, the work he puts into it. Maybe, we should be a little bit more aggressive in our advertising of it, and also in our record-keeping of how it's used. But other than that, I don't believe any of the Commissioners have done anything wrong in that particular situation.
Well, I mean, I, I think that's what I was saying, but I thank you for, for, you know, saying exactly what I just said. But I'm not sure why anybody would think otherwise. I mean, the man volunteered his time, and, you know, we want to hire somebody when, I mean, somebody's volunteering their time, that's, I, I thank him for his volunteer, you know, I'm just going to say, I thank you for your volunteer time. I'm sure you have records of it, and, you know, I don't question anything that was done, because I've, I've never heard of anyone using that for political gain. And if I was, I would have been the first one out here screaming about it, because you know me, I would say something. So I don't know of it happening, and, you know, I, that's all I have to say on that. And I, I think it's just, just political crazy season is what the problem is, and it's ridiculous at this point. But anyway, it's only getting worse, so I guess we have more to deal with. And then on a final note, I just want to say, with that, with the political craziness that's going on, you know, some people don't realize, like, they don't realize what you're going through when something like this happens. And, you know, every once in a while, somebody else goes through a little bit of what you go through every day, and you realize, they realize just how bad it actually can get. And I appreciate that. I appreciate the, the acknowledgement of that. But I also appreciate the fact that when things like this do happen, and the political season is going nuts, and the paper is continually out there promoting certain people and not promoting others, and attacks are occurring, it's easy to fall into a, you know, into an area that's, you know, oh geez, it's not, this isn't fun, you know? So I just want to make sure that I thank all the people who have reached out to me in the past two weeks, in support of me and to give me encouragement, and I'm very blessed to have that. And, you know, God puts certain people in everyone's lives throughout the years, and, you know, it's really nice to hear from a lot of those people that have been in my life for the past 54 years of my life, that I haven't heard from in a while, who are saying, hang in there, we're with you, we'll always support you. So I thank, first of all, God for putting them in my life, and second of all, you all know who you are, and if you're watching, I just want you to know, I really appreciate the fact that I have you in my life and in my corner. Thank you very much. And I hope you all have a happy Easter, and I want to make sure that I just sent that out there. Thank you all. Happy Easter, guys.
Commissioner Terry?
Happy Easter.
I'd just like to remind everybody that we're going to be having a blood drive here at the Lackawanna County Government Center, and that's going to be on April 26, 2019, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. You know, blood is life, and life is blood. So please make sure you get out for that, and hop on the trolley with the special prize for each ride. That's going to be Saturday, April 20th, at the Trolley Museum, and it's 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Trolley departures are 9:30 AM, 10:30 AM, 11:30 AM, 12:30 PM, and 1:30 PM. And also, I just want to let Joan, we will definitely keep an eye on what's going on with Coroner Transport, because we want to make sure that everyone gets to their stops, their destinations, their appointments and whatever. That's why we brought, also, I want to bring up, we brought Rich Bart-Bullishin to talk about Red Alert. That's to alert people, let them know that something like that happens. Most of the sirens in most municipalities have not been utilized in years, and they're either dysfunctional, or they may work, but there isn't many out there like you recall from years ago. But this Red Alert is the, the new thing. So, you know, I mean, that's what we're looking at, to make sure that everybody's safe. I, too, would just like to thank Bill McDonald for volunteering his time, giving back to the community through ways that make people happy all throughout Lackawanna County. The box is there to showcase what the stadium's about, and that's what the purpose has been since 2008 forward. I cannot speak on the past. I know it was basically, it was utilized by the Commissioners and for businesses and other opportunities, but from there forward, there has been lots and lots and lots of charitable organizations and organizations that give so much to Lackawanna County, and it just really matters. And I'd like to just thank Bill McDonald. And I'd like to wish everyone a happy and safe Easter and this great holy week. I'd like to take a motion to a...
Just, just if I can't comment.
Yeah.
If I can't comment on a couple things regarding the corrections officer was brought back...
Oh, sorry, forget.
Yeah, the Commissioners here developed a policy that if there's allegations in a civil suit, the person would be put out on administrative leave. And there's a reason for that. If you just terminate him for allegations in a civil suit, then you're going to be subject to a constitutional claim, and end up paying him back anyways.
Right.
So if there were allegations against officers that weren't proven, they went out on administrative leave. What the county adopted a few years ago, if you're arrested, we have a zero tolerance policy. If you're arrested, you are terminated. The reason that came about was the Joe Black case, because Joe Black was put out on administrative leave, then he was arrested, he stayed out on administrative leave for a number of years, and then was convicted. Right, we took a policy that if you're arrested, you're immediately terminated. In the case of the officer who was acquitted, his termination was based on one item, his arrest. Once he was acquitted, his arrest no longer existed. So we were required by the collective bargaining agreement to bring him back. But we put him immediately out on administrative leave. Now, we will investigate those allegations and make a separate determination. So Joan knows, the two officers that, there's two corrections officers that are pleading, we don't have to pay them anything, okay? They've been terminated, and they've, they've agreed to a guilty plea, all right? So we don't, we'd save them money, save the county money instead of putting them out on administrative leave, okay? We don't have to reimburse them. But if you fire somebody for an arrest that has ultimately determined not sufficient evidence, you have to take him back. And regarding the counselor, it is the county that that came, the information came to the county, all right? We immediately scheduled what's called a laudermill hearing. You have to do that. Call her in and say, here's the allegations. How do you react to it? The day before that, she resigned, because she didn't want to go in. She's not coming back. She resigned. So the county has to operate within the constitutional requirements, okay? And if an individual is acquitted, we have to bring him back, but we can also then investigate the allegations against him. And that's what we're doing now. And that would happen to anybody else who strikes. In addition to that, without going into detail, we've sent correspondence relative to evaluating the other officers that are out on administrative leave and not been called back. It... It, it's a delicate situation, but we are moving in that direction, because quite frankly, it's costing the county a lot of money. All right, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, so there's no misconception. The process of the county enacted saves the county money. The only people are out on administrative leave that those aren't been charged with the crime. And in terms of the story on the counselor, it was the county that brought that to the attention of the DA's office. It was the county that brought it to the attention many years ago. And if you don't mind, I have a list of some of the nonprofits that used a box.
Yeah, I figured we did. I mean, go ahead.
All right. Westside Senior Centers, the Munchak Golf Volunteers, the Dunmore Little League, St. Joe's, Group Home, St. Lucy Holy Name, Patty Dugay, Carmel YMC Autism Group, Irish Women's Group, Delaware Towers Senior Citizen, Webster Towers Senior Citizen, 109th National Guard, Marine Corps League, Red Cross, Korean War Vets, Rotary, Big Brothers and Sisters, Airport Volunteers, the Red Hat Ladies, the United Cerebral Palsy, ARC, Group Home, New Story Staff, Geno Merly Volunteers, ARC Board of Director, Mayfield Girls Choir, Lutherwood Senior Centers, Joe Kudo, Taylor Seniors, Boys and Girls Club, Ronald McDonald House, Hometown Hero, United Neighborhood Center, Southside Community Center, Dunmore Community Center, Forever Sammy, Telespan, South Abington Seniors, Taylor Community Center, Geno Merly Veterans, Lackawanna County Veterans Affair, Pegville Assembly of God, New Story School, Autism, Women's Resources, Geneva House, IMA Group, Self-Autism Groups, Clark Summit Hospital Staff, Jog for Jude, Old Forge Little League, Old Forge Middle School, Green Ridge Little League, Scott Township Little League, VFW Simpson, Vets Courts, David Isley asked for it, and Lackawanna County Historical.
And so much more, and so much more.
That's who's used this.
So much more.
Right, right, that's, but...
Yeah, I always attend the first night on July 4th. Always.
ARC was there for the first night.
And the commissioners, too, but, and I talked to Billy McDonald, he said when he first got there, 95% of that was used for political. Now 98% is used for nonprofits. And it's just a shame that a person who volunteers, you can't appreciate the time taken in contacting people, finding dates...
Absolutely.
Getting them tickets. It's just amazing, and he does it voluntarily.
Absolutely. I agree 100%.
I just wanted to bring that out.
Thanks for bringing that up. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.[1796.88]